Good evening. It's 6:02. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Board of Education for our work session. As we begin our meeting, if we could please begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag's over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Mr. Chambers, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Ms. Pavlik?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Thank you.
And at this time, at the last meeting, we kind of went through some of the printed rules for public participation. Those are still in effect for tonight. And, you know, we have those rules that have been put out there. We want to welcome everybody here. We have another nice group of people that are out for the meeting tonight. It's my understanding that we switched locations because there'll be some choir concerts and things going on in the PAC. And this middle auditorium actually works great for this. So thank you to the administration and to everybody that helped move the technology over here so that we could conduct the meeting over here. And I'll get into the roll call or the additions and removals. But before I do that, did you want to talk about...
And like Mr. Skidmore said, we have moved the meeting tonight because we have all of our fall plays and productions coming up and they're doing set setups as well as rehearsals. So we're trying to show some flexibility with our student performances. We are looking forward to getting back into our normal location. I am excited that we have our central office administrative team joining us up here this evening. And we do have lots of regular business to talk about this evening in regards to some of the academics and other things that are happening in the district that we're looking forward to sharing and discussing with the board this evening. The other thing I did want to mention is that I did say last time that we were not going to have a public comment section on our work session meeting. We did end up adding one because there is an action item. And I know it's important to this board that if we do have an action item to allow for public comment. Part of the feedback that we did receive the last time, as we are more strictly following our board policy when it comes to the operation of our rules, is finding a way to evenly distribute the comments during the comment section. So tonight, we are going to randomly choose during that 30-minute period. And it actually looks like at a glance here, like probably everybody's going to get an opportunity to speak this evening. So I thank everybody for their patience as we make adjustments and try and make sure that we listen to your feedback and provide everybody the opportunity to have their voice heard as part of our board meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. So we have the agenda that's been prepared by the administration. And under item B, are there any additions, removals, or modifications to the agenda? Hearing none. If there's a motion to accept the agenda for tonight?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavlik. And second, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, if you could call roll?
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Sable?
And the first item for tonight, I would like to welcome Dr. Schubridge. Dr. Schubridge is the president of Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital. Thank you for joining us this evening. His office reached out to me last week, and we were able to have a meeting to talk about what's happening at Medina Hospital in terms of COVID. And Dr. Schubridge offered the opportunity to come and address our board to discuss what's happening at Medina and our Board of Education members. Were able to submit some questions to Dr. Schubridge as well as late as this morning, which is what we were talking about at the very beginning of the meeting. So I'll turn things over to you at this time, Dr. Schubridge. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So we're big fans here at Cleveland Clinic of what you're doing there to get kids back in school for in-person learning. We know how important that is. At the same time, we'd like you to partner with us as we try to get through the pandemic that's ravaging our community. So some questions from your board members, they were all very good questions, so I'm gonna go through them sort of rapid fire so that we can get the answers you'd like. So do I recommend, do we recommend people mask when indoors? We certainly do when you're unable to. Social distance to six feet or more, so crowded areas, and this particularly happens in schools. We would like to see that masking in place. We do that here at Medina Hospital as we take care of our patients every day. So masking is still an effective form of prevention of the disease. Next question is Governor Dewine was appealing with six heads of children's hospitals in the state to implement mask mandates, yet we see that the rate of COVID infection is going down. How do we rectify that? So the insight on that is that, yes, we have seen the total population case numbers start to decline a little bit, but we're still well above what we need to consider us past this pandemic. And unfortunately, we're seeing increases in the number of kids with COVID. So we're still not out of the woods yet. And so that was the appeal because they are afraid statewide of an inundation of kids with COVID that may need hospitalization and be a strain on resources. We don't have any information on any new variants at this time, but we do know the one we're dealing with is probably one of the most communicable diseases we've ever seen. The spread rate is very high. And as we all know, even vaccinated people can get a mild case and break through COVID. So we still have to do the smart things, hand washing, hand hygiene, social distancing when you can't mask, and mask up when you can. What can we do as a Board of Education to help keep our community safe and protected? Well, I would encourage you to consider as much masking as possible, and then the encouraging of vaccinations when available at the appropriate age ranges is something that we're encouraging here, and we would ask that you partner with us. And I know that the county health commissioner feels the same way. Next question. Do admissions statistics maintained by the hospital distinguish between patients who are hospitalized exclusively due to COVID and those who test COVID once admitted for other conditions? So the easy answer to that question is we see very, very little to no patients come into our hospital without COVID who get COVID while they're here. That's because we take care of COVID patients in certain areas of the hospital, and we don't intermingle them with other patients. So the breakdown is overwhelmingly people who need to be hospitalized for COVID, we don't see people getting COVID at the hospital. We have a few caregivers that have gotten COVID, but fortunately, we've had no fatalities among our caregivers. How many school-age hospitalizations due to COVID have occurred at Medina Hospital? That's easy to answer because we don't have a pediatric unit at Medina Hospital. So we'd have to get that data from the Health Department or Children's Hospital or Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital, but none are currently in Medina County, here at Medina Hospital. What percentage of COVID admissions they see are occurring in the absence of any other medical conditions? Well, certainly those who need to be hospitalized for COVID tend to have a little bit more in the way of coincident medical conditions that might put them at risk. But we've seen with this variant, more and more younger, more healthier folks without underlying medical conditions need to get hospitalized. So it's still a serious situation for unvaccinated patients. Is the hospital currently fully staffed? If the hospital is not fully staffed, to what degree are staffing issues contributing to the current situation? I'm fortunate to say here at Medina Hospital, we are fully staffed, and we've been able to maintain that. It's been a strain. We have been short in some areas from time to time, but as far as nursing and beds and taking care of patients, we've been able to keep the staffing at appropriate levels. So the next question is, why did the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services website show a high capacity of 98 beds when Medina Clinic only has 12? I wish I had a good answer for that. You know, some of the data that's on the HHS website is supplied by local health departments. So it could be that that number was supplied in thinking about all the ICU beds that were potentially available close to Medina County, but I don't know the answer to that for sure. But certainly, I think, as we've all found out in the past week, and we know that we only have 12 ICU beds. And the second question about that was, is there a reconciliation report that can support the accuracy of these numbers so our community can have confidence in the data being reported to HHS? Well, the most important reconciliation has already been done, that you realized that there was an error on the website and reconciled it with the fact that we only have 12 ICU beds at Medina Hospital. And a good way to check that was the Cleveland Clinic website, which is great. We can have our administrator look into how those numbers may be corrected in the future so there's no misunderstanding. So according to the CDC's website, it appears hospitalizations are beginning to drop across the nation. Are you seeing the same thing here in Medina? Fortunately, we are seeing a decrease in new cases, but it's sort of like just over the tip of the top of the roller coaster as it starts to come down. We have not seen a precipitous drop in cases, and we're still well above where we need to be to keep folks safe. So to give you some perspective on that, there's still 2,000 Americans dying every day of COVID, and we are seeing still over 117,000 cases nationwide daily. To be considered past the pandemic, we need to be less than 10,000 new cases. So you see, we still have a long way to go. And here in Medina, we still have over 30 patients in our hospital, Medina Hospital, that are sick with COVID that we're taking care of. So still a significant amount of work to do to get past this. That's why we're asking for your partnership. Just a few more here. What's the clinic's policy regarding vaccination for its own staff? We are currently not mandating vaccination for our staff, but we will be following the United States guidelines that President Biden put out. So we will be probably having a mandate at some point very soon. It may impact our staffing, but we feel that we'll do it and we'll be able to do it in a way that has the most minimal impact on our staff. What kind of issues does COVID present for childbirth and delivery? I think the most important thing to note is that today, a CDC health alert was put forth by our county health commissioner that encourages pregnant women to get vaccinated against COVID because there's been significant morbidity and mortality, in other words, you can get seriously ill as a pregnant person, and increased risk of death. So we're recommending vaccinations for that group of folks as well. And then what type of mask is the best mask that's preventive of spread of COVID? It's what I have on right now. It's a surgical mask that you can get at any store or gas station, easy to get, better than a cloth mask, no need for an N95. But masking is safe and effective, and I thank you for inviting me to help clear the air on some of these issues tonight, and I hope I helped out.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I would invite our board members, if you have any follow-up questions, we would gather those, if you forward those to myself and Amy Busby, and we'll get those to Dr. Schubridge as well. Next item on the work session agenda is the state report card. There have been many changes made to the state report card heading into this school year. And I believe I had mentioned last time, we actually played an active role on the state report card committee through our engagement with the alliance. I actually served on the state report card committee. And I'm going to invite Tina Cassidy, our Director of Instruction, to talk a little bit about the state report card.
Okay, thank you. So before I get into the changes that are going to happen to the 21, 22 state report card, I want to talk a little bit about the report card that's going to be coming out next month. So that is the 2021 report card. It's going to be made available to the public in October, and it's going to look different than our normal report cards due to short-term changes in Ohio law and the accountability waivers offered by the federal government. So there are currently six components listed on our report card, as there have been in the past: achievement, progress, gap closing, K3 literacy, prepared for success, and graduation. But this year, you're not going to see any grades assigned to those. They're all going to be marked as NR or not rated. So for our 2021 findings, what we found across the board, across the state, were that scores were lower this year, you know, in all districts due to the changing educational models and the COVID pandemic. What we found specifically in our district is that we had fewer students participate in state testing last year than ever before. The state has set a benchmark of 95% that 95% of students need to take the state assessments. And we've always easily met that with all of our subgroups. Last year, we had as low as 89% of some students test in some groups, and that's just, I think, parents, some parents felt uncomfortable about sending their students in. There was no remote testing available, so we had lower participation. And again, the state has set a benchmark at 95%. So if we had been graded this year on our report card, we would have received a deduction for having a lower percentage than that. But although our scores were lower than normal, scores across the state again were lower than normal, so overall, our performance was in line with other years. So if we looked comparatively across the state, we would have scored about the same where we usually do. So now I want to get into some provisions from the report card that is going to be available to us next year because there were legislative changes made to the report card, as Aaron said, based on input from districts across the state to try to make the report card a more accurate reflection of how our school district is doing. So this report card that I'm talking about now is going to be effective for the report card that's issued next fall, so based on our results of our testing this year. So this will be available fall 2022. It's going to replace the A through F letter grade system with a five-star system. So right now, we get letter grades in all the components. We also get an overall district letter grade that is going to go away, and there's going to be a five-star rating system instead. And in addition to that, there's also going to be some context to those stars. So you'll see descriptions included, also trend arrows, so that it's not just a C or a B, but it'll say three stars, and that's an upward trend, or five stars, and that's something that we had gotten before, so that you'll have some context of how we normally perform versus how we performed that year. We are not going to get an overall rating for our district next year. The state wants to, the state will wait a year before we get overall district ratings, but we will be graded in all the component areas. So again, starting with next school year, we're going to have six components, as we usually do, and gap closing, achievement, progress, and graduation are four we have now. They changed the K3 literacy, and they called it early literacy. There's just some very subtle changes to that component. And then the prepared for success is now college, career, workforce, and military readiness. There's a big overhaul to that component, and the state is still working out on exactly what that's going to look like. We are not going to get graded on that component until '24, '25. It will be reported, however. So the changes in achievement, based on the new report card, right now, we get graded on whether we hit 80%, which is a benchmark the state set. So did 80% of our students pass? That is gone. That will no longer be a factor in our achievement score. Now, we're going to get graded solely on performance index, which takes into account how well our students do on the tests. So we receive more points for students who scored accomplished or accelerated, proficient, and it kind of just goes down from there. And then they give us an average of how well overall our scores were. Usually, they set the score at the maximum, so every student in the state would score accomplished, and that was our top goal. The state realized that was a little unrealistic, and so what they are going to do now is instead of the top goal being everybody scores perfectly, it's going to be the highest 2% of the performance index achieved in the state for that year. So it'll be a more fair assessment. They're also going to include American history and government, which wasn't previously included. It was just ELA math and science. So those are the changes to the achievement component. In gap closing, what they did was they moved the gifted performance indicator and the chronic absenteeism indicator into gap closing. That used to be part of achievement, now that's going to be part of gap closing. The other pieces are going to be similar to what they were in the previous year. So there'll be an EL proficiency improvement indicator, subgroup graduation targets that the state sets for us, subgroup achievement targets that the state sets for us, and subgroup progress targets which the state sets for us. Progress is our value-added component, and when teachers receive their value-added scores, it's based on a three-year average. When districts received grades on their report card, it was based on that one single year. So they're changing that to be also a three-year average. If there's only two years, it'll be 67 and 33. If there's one year, it'll be 100% that year. But once we have three years of data, it'll be 50% for the current year and 25% for the previous two years. So it'll be more of a trend rather than a one-year look. Graduation remains the same. It'll be the use of a four- and five-year cohort graduation rates. Early literacy, again, very similar. We will still look at a percentage of students scoring proficient or higher on third-grade reading, whether schools or districts are making progress to improve our off-track readers. We currently have that as well. The new section is going to be, they're going to look at a percentage of students who are promoted to grade four who are not subject to retention under third-grade reading guarantee. So we're hoping that what this means is that they'll be looking at the alternative assessments we also give because we do very well with our K3 literacy that way. College, career, workforce, and military readiness, basically, they're going to be looking to see if students earn one of the following, and you can read that list. Those are, right now, they're basically our seals that students will have to earn for graduation for the class of 2023 and on. So I think that we'll score pretty well in this area as well as we're already preparing students that way. Another new thing that they're going to add to our report card is a student opportunity profile. That will be with the 22, 23 school year. So they're going to look at things like ratios of teachers and other staff to students, students enrolled in arts, physical education, or world language courses, and participation in extracurricular enrichment or support programs. So that'll all be reported to the public as well. And finally, they added some district requirements, which aren't different from us because we usually do this anyway, but now it's in law. It requires each school district and other public schools within 30 days after state report cards are issued to notify parents and include a link to the report card on the website. Again, we always do that. And it requires each district to present the state report card to the Board of Education, which we also have done in the past. And that is basically the changes to the new report card. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Cassidy. I have a couple of questions. I'm just working backwards on Slide 10, the student opportunity profile. Is that something that will be graded or ranked or just informational purposes only?
Yes, just information.
Okay. And then back on Slide 6, the gap closing?
Uh-huh.
You mentioned the subgroup targets that the state will give us. Are those then just specific to our district, or is it where we rank related to districts similar to us in size and profile?
So they set subgroup targets for us statewide.
Okay, so every district has the same targets?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tina, I just want to make one comment. I think that student opportunity profile, that is going to be excellent because we all know that there are those intangibles in a high school experience and education that it's, I like the fact that they're gonna, we're gonna start seeing that.
And I think our students really do participate in a lot of extracurricular activities, so I think that's going to be a nice thing to see on our report card.
Mrs. Cassidy, thanks for the update. Just administratively, how do these requirements compare with what you as an administrator had to do in the old systems? Is it going to be a matter of maybe a few adjustments in the first year, and then it will be about the same? Or is it more or less? Or is this an improvement, in your opinion, or in terms of the work that goes into complying with the requests?
I do think that in certain areas, it is an improvement, that it's a more fair representation of the work that we do. So, you know, like the enrichment, like the early literacy component changes, I see that there are some benefits. But, you know, overall, it's, you know, basically the same. There are some improvements though. Thank you.
And the next item we'd like to discuss with the board is our new strategic plan. Tonight, I'd really like to just reintroduce our Board of Education to the new strategic plan we've been working on. It is not yet complete. We're still in the process. As of today, we had a meeting working on the new strategic plan. Our old strategic plan, we are actually in the last year of that plan. We initially had thought we were going to finish it a year early, and then we were hit by COVID. So I'm actually glad we were a year ahead of the game with the old strategic plan. It's given us a little extra time to implement things such as teaming at the middle schools, which wasn't directly written within the plan but supports the ideas of the plan. When we put that plan together, looking at 21st century learning and heading towards 21st century learning, which is a big part of the new strategic plan, was really a building point within that plan. It is exciting that we were able to complete all the components of that plan. We do have one piece that was not completed. We were looking at trademarking our emblems, our Medina M or Medina B, which we did look into doing, and we have since made the decision not to move forward with that, simply because the costs in doing so would be at such a level, we're not sure that it's worth doing it. Our intent in trademarking is not in preventing anybody from using our trademarks. We want our community to be able to use our trademarks. It's actually to prevent people who are improperly using the trademarks from using them, which, believe it or not, has happened on occasion where they misappropriately use the trademarks. And we've handled those on an individual basis, and we will continue to handle those on an individual basis. But in terms of responsibly using district funds, I think at this time, it's in our, would be best for us not to continue to move forward and continue to make our trademarks available for our community's use, just as it has been. So I don't see that being a part of the new strategic plan. With the new strategic plan, what you're going to find is that it builds upon a lot of the concepts and strategies within the last plan. We are not trying to recreate the wheel. I think we've got a lot of good things going on, and we want to build upon the great things that we have going on to make them even better. And I think you're going to hear that as we, our quote team discusses some of those objectives with you today. In putting together this strategic plan, we did have quite an extensive process, and I know you're all familiar with it, but I'm going to say it anyways. We went through it last year. We had approximately, I think, 80 participants in our committee, and it started out with the development of the portrait of a graduate. That same information was utilized in the creation of the beginning of the That same information was utilized in the creation of the beginning of the strategic planning process. We also did a surveying process in the community. In addition to that, we had multiple focus groups that were run from different components within the community, including focus groups with board members, with parents, with local businesses, with students. We, we really tried to cover all the parameters that we could in order to get feedback into this current strategic plan. In putting this strategic plan together, we did learn a little bit from the last plan. So it's going to look a little bit different in its structure. One of the big things that we learned is that we need some flexibility built within the plan. We've got our goals and our objectives, and we definitely need action steps on how to achieve those goals and objectives. But as we go through a five-year plan, we need flexibility in knowing that those action steps could change. For instance, in the case of something like COVID hitting. It could change what those action steps look like in order to meet those goals. So it doesn't change the objectives, but could change the action steps. So today, what we're going to share with you are the draft of the objectives that are put together. Our goal is this winter to present the full plan to you, which would include the action steps, which would be the plan in its entirety. And we're looking somewhere around probably December, January in, in regards to, to doing that. Part of the plan, especially when we're talking about facilities and facilities is a whole nother conversation that I don't have on the agenda tonight, but we are going to have on a future agenda, but I wanted to mention it. It is, it is something that we put on hold last year because of the pandemic. It is a discussion that we're still having, the redistricting and facilities. Right now, we are waiting till the spring. We have asked the state if they would redo the enrollment study for us at their cost, and they agreed to do that. And that's actually a pretty expensive study to do, so we appreciated their willingness to do that. But believe it or not, that study is now already two years old, and that's why they were willing to do that. So we are waiting for them to complete that. Once we get that information in the spring, we want to go back out to the community and to the staff and to our students and start having those conversations that we began having right when the pandemic. I, I think we had our very first community meetings right when the pandemic hit and stalled the entire process. Other than that, it's really a very open door in terms of what direction we might go. What I can tell you is that we still do have the need for redistricting at the elementary level due to imbalance in enrollments within our elementary buildings. Now, what that looks like in terms of district-wide adjustments, those are conversations that we need to have. And what that means in regards to adjustments to our facilities, those are also discussions that we need to have. I can tell you the facilities that have been identified by the state in terms of needing updating, replacement, or upgrading. But those aren't necessarily things that we have to move forward with. A change in circumstances this time from last is in order to do any kind of construction, we were looking at a bond issue. Obviously, it costs money to build. And in order to have a bond issue and put that on the ballot, the last time, that actually would have gone on the ballot either just coming up this November or last spring. And obviously, that's not happening. We will need an operating levy coming up here in twenty-two, twenty-three, three, four, approximately. And a concern is when you get a bond issue and an operating levy running together. And that's a major concern for me. As, as much as it is important that we have great facilities for our students to learn in and our teachers to teach in, the resources to be able to teach our students, I think I place an even higher value on. So I think there's a lot of important conversations we need to have, and we need to have with our community in terms of what they find important. Because what I don't want to do is be in a position where our community's in not, not in support of either or where we're in a situation where I've seen in other communities where a bond issue is passed and you have a brand-new building, but you can't afford to staff the building, which is not a situation we want to be in. So at any rate, this discussion today really wasn't intended to be about that. That's a, a quick update. In November, at our work session, we are planning on doing a more extensive facilities update for the board. We've already discussed having that on the November agenda. So we'll get into that a little more in depth. But I did want to give the board a little bit of background because some of this stuff is within the strategic plan because it's things that we've been talking about. And at this time, I want to turn it over to our central office team members. They're going to quickly run through the objectives with you that are relevant to their areas. And I think we start with Tina.
So objective number one, under academic achievement and technology, is to create and offer students essential life skills opportunities through daily curriculum. And as Erin said, that is something that we have already started looking at. Middle school, our middle school one oh one course is an example of that. But that is something that we want to continue to do and expand upon. Partner with local and regional businesses, organizations, and nonprofits to create student internship and mentorship programming options and utilize community resources to more deeply impact student learning. Again, we do have great opportunities for our students in these areas, but that's something we definitely can do more with, and we're excited to expand that programming. Objective two is to advance curriculum instruction and assessment practices to engage all learners in problem-based twenty-first century learning experiences, which is an extension of our, of the work that we have been doing with SOAR. Ensure consistent delivery of curriculum from classroom to classroom and building to building. Explore and expand service learning opportunities at all levels. So those are things we're excited to, to do. Mina's going to talk about it, objective three.
Objective three is implement a consistent data review process to identify students who are academically at risk and enhance our resources and programming for at-risk students. So right now, we utilize the multi-tiered systems of support. We're looking to strengthen that process and then to extend that to our secondary level.
And then number four, Ryan, O'Call, and I are working closely together on, which is to design and implement a district technology integration plan, which focuses on the utilization of technology as a transformative creation, advancement, and connection tool.
Then our second goal involves mental health, climate, and culture. And so we're going to work with all our staff to be trained in our QPR process, which is very similar to CPR, but it's for mental health awareness. And so we're going to make sure all our staff have training in the QPR method. And we're also training students in that method at this time as well. And then our second action step will be to make sure all our staff are trained in trauma-informed care methods by the end of this school year as well. And for the second objective, we're going to create a wellness task force, including students and family members, to look at the procedures we have in place for physical and mental well-being of our students and our staff. So that committee will take place during this school year and next school year. And then that committee will also work with our students to create websites and newsletters specifically for our students, staff, and parents on mental health and mental health awareness.
Objective. Fortunately for me, Erin covered most of my first objective, which addressed the bricks and mortar components of our school facilities and what steps we're going to have to take in the future to try to make sure that they're great learning places for our students. The second objective, review all aspects of physical and cybersecurity throughout the district. Recommend changes in policy and application of best practice strategies. Ensure consistent application of security protocols and procedures for district buildings and district events. That's a long-winded way of saying we're going to take a look at all of our security components and make sure that they're understood and taught to the students and staff so that we know what to do to make sure that our buildings are safe and make sure that people know how to respond so that they can remain safe in those facilities.
The fourth goal you have are finances. First objective is to create financial assessment of future facility needs that coincides with master facility planning. And we're to provide community updates related to projected costs of potential projects, bond issues, resources, and other potential OFCC partnerships. Let's see, we have our objective number two. It's identify financial metrics to create a district performance scorecard and measure versus like districts so that we can compare ourselves throughout the state. And objective number three is to create educational opportunities for citizens and stakeholders to further understand district budgets and outside factors like community expansion, development that may impact district finances and future sustainability.
Okay, goal number five is communication, both internally and externally. Objective one, when I go through the objectives, many of these we already do, but certainly there's always room for improvement. And many of these objectives were based on community and staff feedback. So just to keep that in mind. So communicate effectively with community members who have no direct connection or affiliation to the district. Utilize stakeholder data to determine the most effective channels for community engagement and develop strategies to protect against oversaturation of key audiences. Objective two is perform a comprehensive website audit to determine functionality and ease of information retrieval. Ensure all components of the district website are up to date and consistently monitored. Objective three, foster, grow, and promote community relationships and collaborative community partnerships while serving as a central community hub. Effectively link to district support organizations, civil and service, local businesses, and other stakeholder groups. And develop a clear expectation for internal communication regardless of building or department. So enhancing protocol and workflow so that we make sure that we're delivering a consistent message. So that is objective number four.
The next goal is for staffing and human resources. And we're going to look at implementing a system of support for our staff, teachers, and substitute teachers to work on recruiting the highest quality, diverse professional staff by attending job fairs and reaching out to underrepresented groups for our staff. And then Bob, I'll just go ahead if you want. Create, and then we're also going to look at our audit cycles to gauge operations and personnel capacity in our food service, transportation, and custodial maintenance departments to conduct five-year audits to make sure our staff matches state and national numbers for staffing. And then our last one looks at diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we're going to look at creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion advisory council and creating three groups within that council to look at staff, students, parents, guardians, and community members, looking at our curriculum and instruction, bullying and harassment, and civic engagement. And then we want those committees then to report yearly on their progress to the board and the community.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Sable, I have one question. As far as the money that's available to us from the OFCC, I know that Wadsworth, they unfortunately lost out on that money. Are we in looking at the same situation?
We are not. Wadsworth was in a completely different situation where they had utilized funds to build their high school and then wanted to utilize additional funds at a later time, where we have not used state funds at all. So we locked in a couple of years ago for funding that we're waiting to become available to us. So yes, we're, we're not impacted like Wadsworth.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Thank you all for sharing. That's a lot, and I'm looking forward to continued conversations with us. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to add, we appreciate the work on the strategic plan. And we know that there's been a lot of committee work with that and a lot of work by the Impact Group that helped us devise that and put it together. So we thank you for that and look forward to seeing the progress over the next four or five years as we meet those elements. Thank you.
And our last discussion item for tonight is a COVID update for the Board of Education. And I have good news for this evening. First piece of good news that I want to share with our board is that our COVID cases within the district are on a decline. If you look at our overall COVID cases, for the first time, I am able to sit up here and tell you that our overall absences due to COVID are down. We've been averaging as a district approximately three and a half percent, and we are now at approximately one and a half percent. So that is outstanding news. We are seeing a decline at our buildings in regarding to our mask mandates. Our report that just went out to our families this past Friday, we're seeing improvement at most of our buildings. Particularly, I, I do want to mention AI Roots that was on a mask mandate and is no longer on one because their numbers were particularly high approximately four weeks ago. And that has turned around as well. In addition to that, I'd like to share with the board that I had collaborated with some surrounding districts and some at Medina County. A concern that was brought to me from this board was the quarantining procedures and the amount of students that were being placed on quarantine and were healthy and not becoming sick. As I had stated in the past and will continue to state, I think it's important that we follow the medical professionals and their advice, which what, is what we had done. However, we did engage in conversation with those medical professionals in terms of the quarantining and share with them information regarding what we were seeing within the school districts and how the quarantines were impacting our students. And what that resulted in was a change in the quarantining practices within Medina County. And I, you probably have seen that in the Gazette as well as the communication that we sent out on Friday. So the new quarantining procedures allow all students to be able to quarantine within school with a mask requirement as long as they are not having any symptoms. And that is for students that have at-school contact with COVID. That is a game changer in terms of keeping kids in school, which is a big thing that we've been talking about. And it allows us to really shift our focus on keeping COVID cases out of school, which is what we really should have been talking about all along. Because our focus shouldn't have had to have been trying to keep our kids in school. Our focus should have been just about keeping COVID outside of our school. And I feel like we're in a position now where we can do that. This evening, we do have a recommendation, which I did not anticipate having on this agenda. And it is a result in the change to these quarantining procedures. agenda, and it is a result in the change to these quarantining procedures. As I said at the top of this item, we had good news that we, I was able to share that our COVID cases are on the decrease within the district. And I am emphasizing within the district because I'm not speaking for what's happening in the community or what's happening at Medina Hospital. I'm simply talking about what's happening within our buildings and working with data from within our buildings. But because the system that we had in place, our monitoring system seemed to have been working, we want to keep a similar system in place, but it needs to be modified with the change due to the change in the quarantining procedure. So shifting the focus and taking quarantines completely out of the equation, the new system that I will be recommending this evening simply looks at COVID and COVID cases within a building. I do know it looks like a drastic decline in the percentage that we're looking at. The reason why it looks like such a drastic decline, though, is because we're looking at much less of a student population than we were when we were including quarantines into that number as well. What we did is we went back and we looked at our data over the course of the last four or five weeks, and we correlated where the COVID cases were at with the mask mandates. And that 1% threshold was right around where the mask mandates were going into place. So this is a very similar system to what we've had in place the last three or four weeks, which seemed to have been working. So it is my hope that this system, which has shown to be successful the previous weeks, will continue to be successful moving forward in preventing COVID from getting out of control within our buildings. We will continue to strongly recommend masking within our buildings as we have since day one of the school year. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Qualick, and she can share more specific information with you in regards to the data.
Excuse me real quick, I'm sorry, Dr. Qualick. Mr. Sable, I just wanted to clarify, the new quarantine procedures are for in-school contact only. They do not apply to students who have been in close contact outside of school, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically, the change is the students that are not vaccinated have the same quarantining in-school opportunity as the students that are vaccinated previously.
Vaccinated or unmasked too. So Ryan, do you want to pull that back up? We tried to update our chart so that parents could still use this chart. Again, this is the health department's chart, but we added a box down at the bottom left corner to reflect the new change that we were given by the health department, the opportunity to use. So it would follow the chart, so if you're not vaccinated and didn't wear a mask, you still have that option, or you now have that option at the bottom to continue if you're exposed in the K through 12 classroom setting to attend school if you wear a mask. Then you do have the option to test between day five and seven, and if you test negative, you can remove the mask as well on day eight. So that's an option as well. You can test out of the mask wearing as well. The only thing you cannot do is participate in extracurriculars and sports under this new quarantine rule. So that's the only option you're not afforded, but it does allow you to attend school. The couple of questions we've been getting, it doesn't include exposure if you're in a carpool and you drive to school, it's only exposure in the classroom setting, so only in the school setting. But we wanted to let you know, we'll get this on our website so parents have this. It's all just so confusing. We were trying to put it all in one chart to make it a little bit easier. And as Erin said, the 1% proposal would just be positive cases. So in the past, we've been counting quarantines. We would not do that any longer. It would just be COVID-positive students and staff. So I didn't know if the board had any other questions.
And one last thing I did want to mention to the board is that we're going to have a transitional period, assuming the board approves this this evening, between the two systems. And Chris and I had some conversation late this afternoon about this, and we're going to need some overlap time for that transition to be able to occur through this week heading into next week as we move the data with the current masking mandates that are in place, transitioning over into the new data and the new system.
And Mr. Sable, just to also clarify additionally, when you worked the data out, this new percentage, you did look at, I know we're using a percentage now based on positive cases as well as quarantines. But if we were to take out our current quarantines and have just our positive cases right now, we would be at the same place where we are in terms of the buildings that have the mask, current mask mandates?
It'd be very similar, yes.
Thank you.
I just want to take the opportunity, I think this is a great step forward. I think there is a lot of credit to go around to people up here and also people who've been attending meetings and have helped identify this issue. So, you know, these kinds of approaches I think are positive. I think we need to keep our eye on the data, and I think that's a great development too from the previous policy that we've adopted. So, you know, just thank you to you and the other superintendents that you've worked with to make this happen, because I do think any policy change that keeps more healthy kids in school is a good development. Yeah, I know, Erin, you've worked hard, Harrison and Sable, but I know Mr. Harrison has pushed as far as seeing if there's ways that Medina County could follow what some of the other counties have done with the quarantines and with Valerie as well and others. So thank you both and the administration for working with the health department on that. We appreciate it. Did you have more you wanted to tell us about that before we started into the, okay. We're going to do the public comment here in a minute. Does anybody want to take a recess before we do the public comment? You want to jump into it? Be good? Okay. So as Mr. Sable had indicated earlier tonight, we are randomly picking speakers for tonight, and I, we do have a time clock, I believe. So we have two microphones here, and I'm going to go ahead and read the rules. We have, they're in the agenda for tonight. And Ori Farr, if you want to come on up, and then I will go ahead and read the rules. Community members wishing to address the board are asked to abide by the following guidelines. Attendees shall register their intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival at the meeting. After those that have registered have spoken, if time allows, the board president will ask for public participation from all their attendees. Please state your name, address, and affiliation. Please keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless others wishing to speak have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address the board, may address or question board members individually. And again, in the agenda, we have these other standard things from our policy that are there. So, Mr. Farr?
Yes, hi, this is Ori Farr from 327 Share Copy Road. And first of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with the board. I'm going to go over some data. 319 MCSD students have tested positive for SARS-CoV-2 since the start of the 2021 school year. That's approximately one out of every 20 students in your district. The positive cases for staff is 42 during the same time period, or approximately one out of 10 workers. MCSD students are 2.31 times more likely to become infected by SARS-CoV-2 when compared to the rest of the Medina County residents. As bad as that is, it's worse for the staff. They are actually 4.02 times more likely to become infected. These stats are abysmal because our schools are not implementing guidance set forth by the CDC. One of the missteps is with policies that allow for 3% or 8% or 1% of students to get infected as a prerequisite to face mask mandates. This is akin to putting in a sprinkler system after your house catches on fire. It makes no sense. The CDC argues against that as well, by the way. They want you to look at community spread because our kids, our parents, they're all in the same community. They go to the same stores. They go shopping, they go to the same restaurants. That's where the spread comes in to the schools, and then it gets amplified, as we have seen in the first three weeks of the school year. So the CDC guidance states that if there are more than 50 cases of community transmission in one week per 100,000 residents, layers of protection must be implemented in classrooms. For Medina County, that means that if approximately 11 cases per day for seven contiguous days are reached, CDC policies should be enacted. Our county is seeing over 90 cases per day, so that's eight times higher than the CDC recommendation. The lack of proper guidance has caused our schools to amplify the already extremely high countywide epidemic, which is number one now for Northeast Ohio, by the way. Number one, just came out. I ask that this board recognizes that it is not expert in epidemiology. You guys are not experts. And that we start focusing on CDC guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. All right, our next speaker, Anne Manzi, if you want to come up.
I just wanted some quick clarification, based on what you said on the new recommendation. Is it on? I did, sorry. Yeah, Anne Manzi, 3985 Sunset Drive. I was wondering if you're aware of the new Health Department quarantine guidelines, and so you answered that today. So I just have one quick question. So based on the new policy that you're going to put in place, does that mean we're going to have mask optional again, or mask mandates still going to be in place? And that's all I really wanted to address. I didn't want to make any big issue. And I know this is not a question thing, I just got confused here with all your explanation. I appreciate the fact that we are going to implement the new Health Department quarantine procedures, because I just found out about it myself too over the weekend. And I think it's good that we're going to keep more kids in school, because that's our ultimate goal here. You know, I'm not sure about the 1%, but my quick question, and I don't know if you can, you know, this is a common area, but I don't know if you can answer it, does that mean there's mask optional, or is the mask mandate still going to be in place?
Thank you, and we'll discuss that as part of the action item, which is F1. We can get into that at that point. Our next speaker we have is Jeff Rogers. Jeff?
I live at 403 Sturbridge Drive. I have a second grader at Blake. And I do appreciate the change in the quarantine policy. I think it makes sense that we're not aggregating everybody who's been exposed when, especially when we're not releasing data on whether those kids are catching it or not. You know, are we quarantining 90% of kids who never ever end up catching it or not? Anyway, I have data to share as well, because I kind of like the way that the policy's moving, but because everyone is keep, or not everyone, there's still people pushing for a broad mask mandate, I wanted to share some data as well. I'm an engineer, I cannot make a decision that I can't support by data. So I go on Ohio's dashboard, I download the raw data, it's super easy, it's available. With three formulas in Excel, you can get data rates for aggregated by age of risk to hospitalization, death, everything. Everything's on there, you don't have to be limited by what the dashboard will show you individually. So we're talking about school-aged children here. School-aged children, as far as mask mandates go, the CDC, everything I'm about to say comes from either the CDC or the Ohio dashboard. The CDC performed a study in Georgia of just under 100,000 students. They studied schools that made, all the schools made ventilation improvements, some of the schools mandated masks for students and staff, others mandated staff only and left it optional for students. Their conclusion was, the lower incident rate in schools that required mask use among students was not statistically significant compared with schools where masks were optional for students. The staff was always masked, the students were optional. They conveniently left that out of the synopsis at the top of the report, but if you can look at that, that's a direct quote in the study. That moves us to, okay, what risk are our children at if they catch COVID? We want to know that, is this a serious risk? School-aged children, this is nationwide data, they've yet to be hospitalized, this is 5 to 17-year-olds, they've yet to be hospitalized, higher than 1.5 out of 100,000, this is a population, which puts them at about 38 times more likely to be, I'm sorry, 26 times more likely to be hospitalized by the flu. For death, school-aged children, it's a death rate of 2,000ths of 1%. I understand that sounds callous, so does every statistic on death when you look nationwide. Everybody in this room allows their children to participate regularly in activities after all precautions that would be more likely to result in their death than 2,000ths of 1%. I'm an engineer, I look at risk all day long, there's not a area of society where we don't balance risk. Our kids are more likely to die in a car crash even after being in a car seat and safety precautions, but we drive them places every day. This is not a high risk for children.
Thanks, Mr. Rogers. And I have Victoria Drooly.
Hi, my name's Victoria Drooly, and I live on Laurel Glen's Drive. In the absence of an option for full masking, I support the action item presented tonight, but it absolutely is not enough. Masking children after they have been exposed is a reactionary measure, and it doesn't do anything to protect our children or their families until they've already been put at risk. The recommendation for universal indoor masking has not changed, and we actually heard that tonight from the president of our hospital in our town. It is his recommendation that we're masking our kids in school. Last year, we had several measures in place to protect the kids in school, and now we can't even get them masked. Well, we can argue that the vaccine offers protection, it doesn't protect our elementary school kids who still don't even have the option to receive it. One of the arguments that I hear against masking is that it isn't 100% effective, and I don't know of many things that are. However, it's much more effective than nothing, and it's more effective when everyone's doing it. From a practical standpoint, it seems like it would be so much easier for us to just mask all of the kids and to send them to school. Because how are you going to monitor who is supposed to be masked after these exposures? Is this still something else that we're going to put on our teachers? I find this to be a really concerning point because we know that asymptomatic spread is real. It seems like the addition of extra oversight without any protection. We have a collective responsibility to the people in our community to do everything in our power to slow the spread. In Ohio, children are now the largest group of positive cases every week, and our state has the second highest number of children hospitalized. Well, that's concerning for our kids, it doesn't even mention the parents. We have parents and teachers in our community who are really sick, people that I know and people that you all, being involved with our school system, most certainly should know. We have some who have died, and I don't understand how we can continue to count them as numbers as inevitable casualties when there are things that we could be doing that we aren't. These are our friends, our neighbors, our coaches, our first responders, and they aren't nameless, faceless numbers. We need to stop acting like there's anything political about scientific data and listen to the recommendation of experts. The board should consider that they do not have the medical expertise or the scientific background to, in good faith, make the decisions for our kids that oppose those of our country's top epidemiologists and infectious disease experts. I'm quite frankly disturbed that we have a Board of Education that doesn't trust the education credentials of experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Scott Bell.
I'm Scott Bell, 220 Highland Drive. I teach ninth grade English in Cleveland schools, my wife is a teacher of the deaf in Summit County, and our children attend Liza Northrup and Claggett Schools right here in Medina. My wife was diagnosed with COVID earlier this year, and hers was a long and difficult recovery. She's still affected by the experience to this day. Let's just say it's been a rough year. As a parent and as a teacher, I've seen firsthand the truth of the studies showing that students learn better in school than at home. My freshmen are attempting to overcome a year and a half's deficit in their learning, and it has been a fabulous challenge. Everyone benefits from keeping students in school, but this can only be done if we keep the schools safe. The question of a mask mandate is not one of convenience, but one of health and of safety. The issue has been raised, how long do we have to keep doing this? I should think that the answer would be obvious, as long as it is necessary. Determining how long this is does not need to be a burden on the school board, the community, or the superintendent. The CDC has set out guidelines, we should follow the experts' advice, the same advice as our own local hospitals are giving. Some folks have said that masking is a personal choice, and they should be allowed autonomy over their own body. It may surprise them to know that I think they're right, to a point. That point is where their choices affect other people's autonomy. As my father told me when I was trying to get out of trouble, "Your right to swing your fist stops at your brother's nose." When someone chooses not to wear a mask, they are in effect swinging their fists, putting themselves and everyone around them at risk. One argument I've heard against wearing masks in schools is that we allow people to go unmasked at outdoor events, even when they're packed in cheek by jowl. So, we should allow students to go unmasked in schools. However, the people at those events are there by choice. They chose to go to the event, chose to buy a ticket, chose to sit and to remain while surrounded by other people. My sons do not have a choice as to whether or not they attend school. They are required to be in a situation where they are constantly being affected and put in danger by the choices of others. There is a simple solution to this situation, mandatory universal masking. Mask until our students are safe. Mask until we are all safe. Mask until the students are vaccinated. Note, this is not simply until a vaccine is available, but until all, or enough per CDC guidelines, students are vaccinated. It does no good to have a fire extinguisher in the box if you don't use it when your stove is on fire. Finally, to those who would take their chances until a certain number of children in the schools have gotten sick, at what point do you consider the risk, the damage to our children, to be bad enough? How many children in the hospital is enough for you to take steps to protect the rest? How many of our kids are you willing to put on the ventilator because you don't want them to wear a mask? How many of our children are you willing to bury? All of this can be prevented with universal masking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next, we have Betsy Jenny.
My name is Betsy Jenny, I live on Dogwood Trail in Medina. Using your data from the three elementary schools, Northrup, Canavan, and Garfield, that are currently under a mask mandate, which affects 997 students, if 10 students total out of the three schools are at home with a positive COVID test and recovering nicely, the other 987 healthy students still in school would have to be masked. Why, when 99% of our schoolchildren are healthy and need to be in school breathing freely and learning without fear, would you require them to be masked at school because of the 1% who are potentially ill and at home? The only reason would be to continue to promote and instill fear and anxiety in our children, and to continue to take control of our children and schools, and take it away from the parents in our community. Masking is not about protecting our kids and staff at school, it is all about controlling our kids and staff. Just as Jesus said, "Whatever you do to the least of these, you do to me." These are our schools and our children, they belong to us. Just as it states on the Medina City School Board website, under "Meet Your Board of Education," it says, and I quote, "The Board of Education is committed to working with the community which owns these outstanding public schools, and the staff and administration that make a daily commitment to the betterment of every child." Where is your daily betterment? Medina City Schools motto is to educate, not to control, to challenge, not to subdue, to inspire, not to diminish, to recognize potential and maximizing achievement. The potential and achievement of our children cannot be maximized by these socialist Marxist mandates, which are not laws, and harm our children and their learning environment. Parents, stand up for your child's right to breathe freely and be educated in the schools that we pay for. And since I have a few more minutes, I would like you to consider inviting Dr. Sherri Tenpenny to talk on COVID, a medical professional and an expert in vaccines, and she has over 40,000 hours of research to back it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Gordon.
I moved to Medina in 1999 because of the community and the school district. I feel now the community and the school district is failing all of us. We have school board members fulfilling personal and political agenda, all to the tune of approximately $4 million from your COVID funds. I am angry my children are being abusively manipulated for your agenda. I stand for freedom of choice. I am saying no to the fact that you think you have the right to take away my rights to my children. You do not know what is best for my children, and neither does anyone in this room, just as I have no right to take away yours. Mask your child if you want, no one is stopping you, but don't stop me from doing what's best for mine. See, the great thing about freedom of choice is that no one has any power, authority, rights to mandate or regulate something you don't want to do. This isn't going to stop at the masks. For all those sitting in the room and hopefully watching, since I know, no, we're not streaming live, the policies, mandates, and unnecessary measures have created a divide in the schools. Just look at the room, it's divided. Sorry, give me a second. The schools, families, and communities have been divided. One is enough enough. Can we all agree to do what's best for our families and leave the judgments for our Lord? Students are physically being attacked, and yes, mine was one of them. Students are being harassed, bullied, by other students and even some educators. My son was assaulted by a staff member aggressively. I said this was happening meeting after meeting, yet you did nothing and you turned a deaf ear. It's got to stop. We receive emails regarding TikTok trends and pranks, regarding about the destruction of property, yet you let students be assaulted, bullied, and harassed. The equality and the acceptance that is being preached is only for a select few. Why can't we pride ourselves in teaching everyone has the right to choose? Because that's what true inclusiveness is. Let the example to all others in the districts and the communities. Let us be the leaders. Let us do what's right, freedom of choice. Benjamin.
Thank you.
I am concerned that you're bringing up potential issues with bullying. Okay, have those been reported to an administrator? We'll look further into that.
Okay. Our eighth speaker, Rebecca, looks like Prentice, number eight.
My name is Becky Prentice, I live at 6399 Hooper Drive in Medina. I'm a Medina Schools parent, and I've been a critical care nurse for over 20 years. The last time I spoke here, I was just starting to talk about parents. I know some people are concerned that there aren't enough kids sick and dying with COVID. Well, I'm here to tell you about the parents. Many of you don't think that COVID will affect you or your world, but I assure you, as a nurse and as a parent, through my village and through my job, it can. A lot of you are freedom fighters, fighting for freedoms for yourself and your children. I'm fighting for something else, and it's nothing new, it's actually on the Medina City Schools core values, and it's something each one of us should be fighting to achieve, one of them being a core value that we provide positive and safe learning environments. Masks work, there isn't a single piece of research anyone can show me that will convince me otherwise, or that will negate the supporting evidence. As we've learned previously, anyone can find any research off the internet and adapt it to present their own agenda, pointing out or even exploiting some numbers, leaving other figures out, thanks to the wonderful internet. It is our duty to provide the safest learning environment that we can, it's in the value. Masks are a cheap and effective layer of protection, they work, they keep kids in school, which is where kids need to be for their emotional, mental, and physical health. Two other core values, real quick, we are committed to the belief that all students should make positive contributions to their family, community, and world, and that we foster partnerships with our families, community, and world, which is something Dr. Shubridge lended to, asking for your partnership. It isn't just about our students' safety, it's our families, our staff, the community, younger people getting sicker than ever. This affects our students in a way it should never have to. There are students across the county burying their parents, there are students whose parents are trapped in lengthy hospitalizations, and if they're fortunate, they get transferred to a rehabilitation center, where hopefully they won't experience any further complications before they finally get to go home to their families. They may never have the physical capacity to do their job again. The emotional and financial burden that COVID is placing on these local families is overwhelming. By not issuing a mask mandate across the district, our students, staff, and families, and community, and health resources are being put in danger. And on a personal note, speaking to children in mental health, anyone who has ever held a child who is asking for a loved one to be brought back home, masks don't strip childhood away, grief does. Please do your jobs and uphold the values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gretchen Long, next speaker.
Gretchen Long, Woodhaven Lane, I'm a parent of a Claggett student and a Northrup student, as well as a toddler. I hope that you will pass this resolution. Given the information that we have from the medical community, including the speaker you brought in today from our local hospital, this resolution that you have appears to be crafted according to advice as well as data. I don't think it goes far enough, but that's not for me to decide, and the medical experts are weighing in, and I appreciate that you are willing to listen to that expertise. I am for strong masking policies, and that's because we can't afford for our hospital system to be overtaxed, which it is, and yes, car crashes happen, driving is a risk, we need hospitals to be available for that. So, we need to do our part to slow the spread by wearing masks until masks are the only tool, until it's not that masks are the only tool we have. A few of you expressed concerns at the last meeting about when mask mandates will end, and, you know, we haven't talked about the tools that are coming out. It sounds like we're getting close to having more tools in the arsenal, that we will be closer to having our children who are under 12 be able to be vaccinated. It sounds as though Merck is close to having an antiviral drug that will be effective in fighting this, but we're not there yet. We need to increase mask wearing until the medical community across our state notifies us that the situation has improved. I need to share with you why I need hospitals to be available. I do have one person in my household, one of my children is immunocompromised, and my child was hospitalized for six days this summer. It was not related to COVID, but we need those beds to be available. Six days after he was out of the hospital, he'd been there six days, we ended up here in the ER for my husband during this pandemic. My middle child, who is a young elementary schooler, had to go to the ER for severe dehydration because of the stomach flu. These things happen. We need the hospital system to be available to us, so we need to do our job. So, I say that's when, we're not going to stop talking about this until we have more tools than masks and vaccines for adults, and so much of our community unvaccinated. I empathize with your situation. You want to be making education decisions. You didn't sign up to be elected to the Board of Public Health, and apparently that's what you've become, so I'm sorry that you're in this situation. I'm sorry that the state has given this power to all of you and not left it.
Thank you. And then, it looks like we're up to the 10th speaker, it looks like there's two sheets of paper left, so we just, it's the pleasure of the board to stop at 30 minutes then, tonight, I would think. Am I hearing a yes?
Mr. President, I think you have to take a vote if you want to extend it beyond the 30 minutes.
All right. Okay, so at this time, I have our 10th speaker, we have Stacy Benny. We'll talk about it after that. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Stacy Benny, I live at 3847 Knots Landing. I represent a group called Safe Kids Medina, which represents some of the most vulnerable students, parents, and teachers in our community. You won't see many of them here tonight, they don't feel comfortable sharing their situation publicly due to fear of repercussions. There was a New York Times article last week entitled, "For Parents of Disabled Children, School Mask Wars Are Particularly Wrenching." In it, a mother from Tennessee says, "We've always known that not everybody really cares about our children, but it is in our face right now, that it's not worth you asking your child to wear a mask so my child can be safe." The members of Safe Kids Medina feel this in our bones. And I want to talk a little bit about community, because I was born here in 1975, I was one of the first classes of kindergarten in Heritage Elementary, I went to the nursery. My childhood best friend is buried in the cemetery across from St. Francis. I was diagnosed with a terminal lung disease called cystic fibrosis in 1978, the same year that my friend died. This community came out and supported us. This community would have done anything to protect us. I went away to school, when it was time to have my children, I came back to this community 20 years ago because of how we were cared for, because we were hurting, we needed help, we needed support, and this community came out. And is this who we are now as a community? Are we so resistant to putting a piece of cloth over our mouths to protect the most vulnerable among us? Are we so resistant to putting a piece of cloth over our mouths to protect the most vulnerable among us? And I would like to say that I went to Prince of Peace Lutheran Church since 1975, and I, I learned some principles as well.
Mrs. Benny, can you direct your comments to the board if you wouldn't mind? Thank you.
One of the things I learned is that I should put my wants above the needs of others. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking at your own interests, but of each of you to the interests of others. I also did, did learn about loving your neighbor above yourself. These are some of the values that were instilled in me in this community. Bringing it back to the Medina City Schools, one of my son's former teachers is in the ICU right now. There are at least five parents of children in the Medina City Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Benny. Okay, so does the board want to make a motion?
Mr. Skidmore, I move that we extend the time by an additional three minutes to allow the final speaker.
We have two more speakers, so it would be...
I move that we extend them by an additional six minutes to allow time for the final two speakers.
Okay.
I'll second.
First and a second. Any questions or comments from the board? Could you please call roll?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Ms. Pavlik?
Hi.
Let's go Ms. Parkers.
Hi.
And Mr. Ross?
Hi.
Mr. Skidmore?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker we have is Kelly Gordon, student? Kellen, I'm sorry, Kellen.
Kelly Gordon, I just wanted to say, you talk about not bullying people, but yet one of your employees bullied me. But the person did not just bully me. The person assaulted me, and I will tell you how. I was walking down the hallway after lunch doing nothing wrong, and felt a very firm and hurtful pull on my arm to where I was off balance. I also did not see that the person pulled me until the person forced my body to turn. I thought someone was trying to pull me down to the floor, and then I saw it was one of your employees. I was wondering to myself, what did I do, do to be, to be pulled that hard? It turned out I got pulled because I wasn't wearing a mask. The person who pulled me kept saying, "Where's your mask?" and demanding my card loudly. I responded with, "I have a medical exemption and don't need to show, and don't need to wear a mask." She finally let me go and said, "I'm going to see this myself." But if I did that to a student, I would be in detention or worse expelled, and nothing happened to the employee too. I just wanted to say this was all over a mask. Lastly, if that's not bullying, I don't know what is. This is why I think kids are getting bullied into wearing a mask because they don't want to get yelled at or they don't want to get quarantined. Thank you.
Thanks, Kellen. And Kellen, I'm sure that Dr. Qualick and others will look into the statements that you made. They'll work with you on that, make sure things are okay. Number 12, Andy Toth.
My name's Andy Toth. I live in Crimson Harbor sign. I'm going to talk about Bill 22 again, guys. We hear percentages all night long. We hear immunocompromis-- my sons immunocompromised or my daughter. I keep them at home. Okay, let's face it. When your time's to go, God's going to let you go. Okay, so don't fight it. You're not going to beat it. I don't mean that in a bad way. If you're going to die from COVID, you're going to die from a heart attack. I don't blame my death of my first son on anybody in this room. That'd be idiotic. You're not going to beat it though, but let's go back to Section 22 or Bill 22. It says it actually removes all authority from the Ohio Health Department. So I'm going to ask the chief of the Medina Police that there should be arrests made in this administration because if it's illegal for you to make a call of putting a mask on a child, which next is vaccines, guys, let's face it, the Medina Police have to do something, and you guys are taking your power to a whole nother level, and it should be, it should be addressed, and there honestly should be arrests made, and I hope there is because that is nothing short of child abuse. So just want to let you guys know, even your own party over there, as you guys can hear, are turning on you guys. Nothing's going to make them happy. How does that make you guys feel? Like, you really have people over here that actually care about the general health and the well-being of this community? Your own people over there have been turning on you guys all night long. That's got to make you guys feel miserable, right? You guys have no support. The best thing to do if you guys wanted to is, if you want to keep your kid at home if he's afraid, keep him at home. We're not going to sit there and bully them. The kids that want to bully our kids with no mask, that's a whole different story. There is no love, okay? We hear love. We hear all this blah, blah, blah over there and from you guys. You guys do not have the authority to do what you guys are doing, and I hope you guys are arrested. Honestly, I hope you guys arrested. This is nothing short of child abuse. So if you're involved, God, God forbid you guys. And, you know, I don't really have a whole lot more to say other than we all know where this is going next, and it's the vaccines. I assure you, I know what you guys are doing, and it's not going to happen to my kids. None of you guys are going to vaccinate my kids. As far as the bullying, you know, I'll go ahead and bring that back up. That's not stopped at the school. You guys don't stop to try and pull the drugs into the school and the kids sharing those in the bathrooms. They get bullied if they don't do it. There are so many other problems that you guys aren't focusing on. You want to focus on a dumb mask. Seriously? You guys are going to be just all right if you guys get COVID, and if you're not, that's your way to go. Out of mind, you're not going to beat it. So, you know, if you're going to die from COVID, you're going to die from COVID. Okay, a mask isn't going to stop you. All this garbage. So I hope the chief of police does something to every one of you guys that are abusing your power, and I'd love to help him with some citizens arrests.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're done with the public comment, and we're going to get back into the meeting session here. Mr. Sable, you want to present the action item?
Resolution Adjustment Regarding Masks for COVID-19. Whereas COVID continues to be community spread in Medina County, Medina City, and in Medina City School District at levels that have caused quarantine of over 1,000 total children, of which 592 resulted in out-of-school quarantines. The quarantines are due to testing positive on FDA-approved COVID tests or being in close contact with a positive individual. Procedures for quarantine are issued by the CDC and the Ohio Department of Health and determine the status of quarantine as in school or out of school. Use of facial masks currently affects the quarantine designations as established by the State of Ohio. As a desire to keep as many students in school as possible and to keep the school doors open to educate students during a pandemic, the Board of Education of Medina City Schools shall consider the following. Background from the CDC. COVID infection is transmitted predominantly by inhalation of respiratory droplets generated when people cough, sneeze, sing, talk, or breathe. CDC recommends community use of masks, specifically non-valved, multi-layered cloth masks to prevent transmission of COVID. Masks are primarily intended to reduce the emission of virus-laden droplets, source control, which is especially relevant for asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic infected wearers who feel well and may be unaware of their infectiousness to others and are estimated to account for more than 50% of transmissions. Masks also help reduce inhalation of these droplets by the wearer, filtration for wearer protection. The community benefit of masking for SARS control is due to the combination of these effects. Individual prevention benefit increases with increasing numbers of people using masks consistently incorrectly. Definitions: Face masks N95 or the like, surgical masks or cloth multi-layered masks. Masks should completely cover the nose and mouth and fit snugly against the sides of the face without gaps. Masks should be cleaned and/or replaced frequently. It's recommended that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to implement a face mask mandate for students in a school building if COVID-positive levels reach 1% or higher at a building, PK through 12. Face masks to be supplied by the Medina City School Board of Education to students and staff if needed. Once a face mask mandate is issued, it will stay in effect for at least two weeks. The two weeks of data on COVID cases will be reviewed to determine if the mask mandate can be rescinded. The mask mandate will be rescinded if the COVID-positive percentage drops below the benchmark percentage level as indicated above. The data will be reevaluated by the Medina City Schools Board of Education and Administration at scheduled Board of Education meetings where the percentages and/or the mask mandate may be adjusted if necessary. The mask mandate is only for within district buildings and will not impact outdoor activities. We will continue the current practice of not requiring masks while students are in the lunchroom, in their seats, and outside mask breaks will be provided when possible. In addition, we will continue to follow all COVID protocols for athletics as outlined by the OHSAA. Masks will also not be required at Board of Education meetings with appropriate social distancing measures.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. So, and again, as you spoke earlier about the 1%, that really relates to the fact that we now have this new protocol for people, children to stay in school if they're wearing a mask and if they have had exposure potentially to COVID, and they normally would have been quarantined at home, but now they can stay in the school. So that changes the scenarios, and that's where your recommendation of the 1% is coming to us.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve this action item.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Parkers.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any further information you want to give us on the action item?
The adjustment is due to the change in the quarantine procedures, the ability to quarantine in school with a mask, and the shift in the policy to no longer include quarantining and solely be focused on positive cases.
Thank you. Want to go down? Anybody have any questions? Valerie?
I do. I have a few. In the latest chart that was provided, in running through here, we have 11 buildings with Evolve. Evolve makes our 11 buildings. But I ran through and I looked at the percentages from last week to this week, and all of our buildings have dropped significantly, including the buildings that do not have mask mandates. Their cases in quarantines have dropped, correct? Yes, okay. I did see in the Gazette Today, local cases continue to fall, which is awesome news. And I want to actually kudos to Mr. Sable because last Monday, we were provided, or a letter went to the governor, and it was the local school superintendents listed below have been and remain in close contact with the county departments of health. They presented to the governor the information, and it was actually one of our county larger districts, Wadsworth, they shared that 799 students were placed into quarantine because of school-related exposure. Of those 799 students, only 50 ended up testing positive over the next seven to 10 days. So that was 6.3%. And kudos because it states right here, "We cannot continue in good conscience to have our students out of school for extended periods of time." "When children are out of school, our students suffer academically and families suffer economically and personally in their lives." So thank you. I know there was a lot of effort that went into this. And I do know that with this, it does give the parents the option, correct? So if they do not want their child in a mask that has been exposed. So right now, masks will be optional, correct? With this threshold, with, okay. And if a parent's child was exposed, they have the option, if they do not want them in a mask, to keep them home for the quarantine. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So if the parent does not want the child to miss any more school, then the mask will be worn for that period of time, correct? Okay. And to me, again, I know that this board, we've always wanted to have these kids in the buildings because the kids, we already know our children have all gone through the homeschool or the hybrid and remote learning and stuff. So I see it as a compromise, and that is just what I wanted to share with my fellow board members. I think it truly does put it back to the parents, the parents' choice on that.
Mr. Harrison?
Thanks. I, sorry about that. Wasn't quite ready. You know, my big concern, I think, with where we are right now and with this proposal is COVID policy changes tend to only go in one direction. They move towards more restrictions without ever necessarily moving back. And I guess my big concern is that that perception is going to be, you know, take root here where this is another example. We've seen plenty from the beginning of COVID restrictions in general where the goalposts kind of get moved. And so the perception of that, I guess, is a concern for me. When we had a meeting four weeks ago, we heard, and the hybrid approach was adopted in the first place, a lot of passionate objections from people thought that that was going too far, and then there were a lot on the other side from people who thought that it didn't go far enough. And I think to Ms. Pavlik's comment about compromise, that's probably the sign of a good compromise when, you know, nobody, I guess, is all that happy with what you come up with. At the same time we did that, there were a lot of other districts who were moving into the full mandate territory. And I'm pretty pleased, I think, that we've been able to avoid that. We've still seen the cases plummet the way that they have. Because many of those buildings, and I've been following this in Northeast Ohio, are now going back to their people. That this, some districts recently said, "Well, this was the day our original mandate was set to expire, but masks have worked, so we need to extend it and double down on the mask mandate." I think the best part about this for us is we've been able to kind of have the safeguards in place without having a requirement that extends to every building under every circumstance. And I think that does strike a good balance for parents to be able to make the decisions as long as the circumstances in an individual building aren't threatening the things that we all, everybody on both sides of this room is committed to, which is keeping kids in school and doing so safely. So in that sense, the hybrid policy has been a success. I don't think in general we should be changing it, but my objection to it four weeks ago was the inclusion of the quarantine numbers in it because I felt like those numbers were being, were kind of driving things up artificially. So I think to preserve the benefits of that policy that we have, it makes sense to exclude, you know, eliminating those quarantine absences from the numbers because presumably from an in-school standpoint, there won't be any quarantine numbers to speak of with the exception of folks who opt out of the mask requirement once their child's had a close contact exposure. So, you know, I think generally I'm supportive of this, not because I think it's a perfect solution, but I think it's a workable compromise. My two top objectives with anything like this is keeping kids in school in person, doing that safely, and also allowing this board to move forward with the other work that, you know, we have. And there's a lot of it, as we saw tonight on the agenda with strategic plan and facilities and everything else. And to do that without having a forever, never-ending debate about masks. So, you know, I think with that being said, if there's anybody else who objects or if we think that this is only one-- we think that this is only one step in an ultimate incremental crawl to a full mask mandate, I think tonight's the night to discuss that, because otherwise, barring any further policy changes, I think we can accept this as a binding policy of the board and move forward from here.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Ross?
I think, from where I'm coming from, I agree with Mr. Harrison. This is not what I like. I'd rather have the mask mandate universal across the district. But that's not on the table tonight, so this is something, and I'm going to support it. But I think from the community standpoint, I think we all need to focus on, we want the kids in the classroom. I don't think anybody wants to go back to computer learning at home. I think that's just awful. I talked to a lot of staff and my neighbors who had to do that, they just didn't like it. And so I think we all need to work together to keep our kids in the classroom. What I want to say personally is, you know, people talk about an agenda and political agenda and all this. Honestly, I don't even know what that means. My motivation is, my background is in the military and in law enforcement. So anytime you're on a board, you're in city council, you're a commissioner, you're going to make decisions on things that you don't have a background in. And so you're only, the goal is to trust your experts, call in your experts, and listen to what they have to say, so that they'll tell you, you know, based on their professional opinion, they'll give you the information, and then hopefully you have what you need to make an informed decision. And, you know, we do that daily here, with finance, with facilities, with a lot of things, transportation, curriculum. We trust our experts, and so that's all I'm doing. I'm trusting my experts. And, you know, CDC, the Ohio Department of Health, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Medina County Health Department, and I can add another one, the Cleveland Clinic. They're all saying we need to mask. You know, that's five to zero. They're not split on it. And so my motivation is just to listen to that and make an informed decision. That's what I'm doing. There's no, when I hear this agenda stuff, I don't even know what you're talking about. And so I think if we can all work towards trusting our experts and making sure the goal is to protect our students, our staff, and making sure our kids stay in the classroom, I think that's important. And so tonight, again, this is, it's not what I would like, but it's something. And so that's why I'm going to support it.
I concur with Mr. Ross. I also just wanted to remind everyone that our students follow rules every day for their own health and safety. They're not permitted to run in classroom, down the halls. They may want to. Their parents might tell them they can, but there's rules in place to keep them healthy and safe every day, not only themselves, but the other students within their classrooms as well. This is very similar to that. Couple of weeks ago, Governor Dewine and the heads of the six children's hospitals implored all of the school board members during a conference call and pleaded with them to have a mask mandate, K through 12, while indoors for two to four weeks, just to slow things down so that our hospitals were not inundated with patients. And we saw that again this evening with Dr. Shubridge, who also recommended that everyone mask when they can, indoors, when they cannot be socially distanced six feet. I think it's important to heed the advice of our experts. The physicians in the call with Governor Dewine also said that we don't know what the impacts of COVID will be on our children. There could be long-term effects they don't even know about, because the kids are more prone to the Delta variant than they were to the initial variant. And there could be cognitive impairments that develop as a result. That's something else to keep in mind. So I will support this. Again, I don't think it goes far enough. I implore the board to, in the future, to heed the experts' advice, especially our local physicians that were here. We hear the parents say they want to make an informed decision with their physician. Dr. Shubridge is a physician here in Medina. I think we should heed his advice. I think we should also go one step further and give some authority to our superintendent that if things start to go awry, that he can take action as necessary. Originally, this action item, when it was first released on the agenda, allowed for him to have some authority as deemed necessary to take action if it was before the next board meeting. And I think that the board should consider that going forward. There may be a situation at some point where perhaps a building does not meet the 1% threshold, but all of a sudden, there's a large amount of cases that happen. I hope that doesn't happen, but if it does, I would hope that, I would like for our superintendent to have the authority to do something about it if it's before we have a chance to reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parkhurst, and thank you, everybody, for your comments on the board. I'm going to be in favor of this 1% tonight threshold. I prefer people to be able to make their own choice with masks. I understand that if there's an outbreak that occurs that reaches that 1% threshold, that the masks will be required. I think it's a good balance. Probably, we're not hearing from the 80% of people that might say that's a good balance. I think we're hearing from those that don't want masks and those that want masks for everybody. Unfortunately, a lot of times in the board business or in the business of working for the public, you don't hear from others that are in agreement at times with your policies and so forth. And I think that there's a fine balance that's been struck. Really, this is a continuation, I believe, of Option Two that we did, what, a month ago? I believe it's a continuation of that, because really, it's keeping it a similar percentage. And it has worked. I mean, we had a community-wide outbreak at the beginning of the year, and we had, it was unacceptable, and there's been quite a change in that. And we're glad that that's occurred. But I believe, I don't disregard any of the science, but I also believe that people have First Amendment rights. Children, there are rules within schools. I don't disagree that there aren't rules that we have to follow. But I do believe that when children enter a school, they don't lose all of their rights, and those rights come with them. So we need to, in my opinion, we need to err on the side of preserving those rights, but also trying to be as safe as possible. And I recognize that there's still going to be masks on the buses. There still will be masks if there are outbreaks that occur and so forth. And it's, I don't know if we have an estimate, Mr. Sable, approximately how many kids are wearing masks just voluntarily in a given classroom. It might depend on the school and on each classroom. So nobody's telling anybody they can't wear masks. Masks are encouraged. It's an individual choice in those situations. And it doesn't, in my opinion, is not disregarding the science. I believe in the science, and I believe it's there. So those are my comments, and if we could go ahead and call roll, please.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank the public tonight. I think everybody's done a very good job at just keeping the way Medina's been at these meetings traditionally in the past. And I want to thank everybody that participated tonight, and thank you for everybody's cooperation. So thank you very much. I don't have a reason for us to call executive session tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavlik. Please call roll.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Ms. Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.